The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular council meeting of May 8th. First of all, it's a pleasure, under presentations, to have Minister Carr here this evening. Thank you, Laurie, for coming. I know you have to go back to Regina this evening, so thank you so much for this. If you could come up front and help me present to two very well, three very worthy recipients, Shar Seaman couldn't make it this evening, but we have Alison Holzer and Tanya Andrist. So if we could have those people come up.
Perfect, thank you.
Congratulations.
We're going to want to get a group photo.
Sure. I'm not getting that.
Group photo.
Group photo.
Just an L's?
Sure, just an L's, everything.
And your boss?
Yeah, just an L's.
Thank you.
One more.
This way.
Sorry, Councillor Broba, we have two keeners tonight, so Councillor Clark and Councillor
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Very, very much appreciated.
Thank you.
You're more than welcome to stay for the meeting.
I know.
Wallyser.
Maybe I'll tune in online.
Ready for the question?
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Carried. And I have to remember, Councillor Frank is with us this evening. He's in the audience on the screen. It was very good of him. He's not feeling well, so rather than get the rest of us sick, he stayed home. So thank you for that, Councillor Frank. Okay, next, could we have a motion, please, to accept the minutes of the council meeting held on April 24th? I'll maybe look over here. Okay, thank you. Councillor Sernick, seconded by Councillor Ford, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, it's our privilege to announce Angrid Singh, our new Economic Development Officer. Angrid. Angrid comes to us from the Greater Toronto Area, and I don't know what's that, some five million people, but...
Oh, six, yeah.
Six, wow. I stand corrected, six million, but thank you so much for coming to Estevan and agreeing to take the position. We're very excited, and we know that you'll do a tremendous job for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Did you have anything else you wanted to say?
Just a pleasure to be here. It's wonderful to meet everybody, and I'll do it justice. Yeah, I'm happy to be here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Angrid. Much appreciated. Councillor Clark?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. First of all, I want to welcome you, Angrid, that we've had a chance to meet you, but perhaps give us a little bio of how, what you've been up to before you got here and how you got here, I guess?
Background-wise, did some work in, for Scotia as well as RBC, and had a chance to develop some business acumen, small business skills, entrepreneurship skills, relationship management skills in my time as a banker. Also had a chance to work for municipal government as well, and did a brief, some brief work in economic development as well as some consulting projects. So that's like, you know, what I can bring to the table from a qualification standpoint, but I think it's more about personality and fit. So from a personality standpoint or for a fit standpoint, I think that the city here is open to change. I think the city wants to make things happen. I feel a spirit of positivity and a desire to actually do things and walk the walk. And it's a gritty attitude, a get-your-hands-dirty gritty attitude, and I think that's something that I can do, I can bring. So just to, you know, touch on what Councillor Lindsay was asking, I think it's more than just the qualifications. I think it's also your attitude, your personality, and that's kind of what I'm ready to bring, an energetic, youthful approach to, just a diligent approach to getting things done. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much. Much appreciated. Go ahead, Councillor Ford.
Thanks, Your Worship. Welcome to the community. It's really, it's really great to be here, and we look forward to working with you. And if there's anything we can do to help ease your transition, I know Estevan's a little bit smaller in terms of, you know, restaurants and having things to do, but I can assure you, there is lots of things to do, and there's lots of great places to eat and things to see, so if you need help or assistance with any of that, please reach out to any of us, and we'll be happy to help.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. And just to touch on what you were saying, I actually live in Benson, so it's like, so I'm, yeah, so Estevan's looking pretty good, so.
I think there's, what, Ted Fabley's in there, Angrid, something like...
Yeah, there's about, there's about like seven or eight people there, yeah.
Okay, well, that is great. Moving on, under original communications, and again, Angrid, you're more than welcome to stay for the meeting. I know I asked many people, not many do take me up on that, but you're more than welcome to stay, okay? And I don't know, Jaclyn, did you want to take a pic now or later? Oh, okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, next, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have from the Estevan OTS Events Permit for June 3rd. The Estevan OTS is seeking a letter of approval for a special event permit to sell liquor and use a Power Dodge Curling Center for our supper event. The 66th Annual OTS Golf Tournament will be held from June 2nd to June 4th. The supper will be held on Saturday, June 3rd, beginning at 6:00 p.m. and ending at midnight. And we seem to know this gentleman. Regards, Tony Sernick. So, okay, no problem. What's the wish of council? Councillor Broba?
Acceptance and approval.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. And Councillor Ford, you'll second that? Okay. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, from GFL, we have the Kart Report for March 23rd. Pretty straightforward. Average weight of the trash carts, 15.83 kilograms. 13,173 carts were emptied for a total weight of 208,520 kilograms. So could we have a motion, please, to accept that report? Thank you. Councillor Clark, seconded by Councillor Wallyser, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Okay, next, we have a couple from Estevan Exhibition Association. We have the Cabaret, June 10th. Events permit from Brenda Montai. Would you please add to the agenda for City Council a request to approve a community event permit to the Estevan Exhibition Association for the Energy City X Cabaret? The Energy City X Cabaret will be held in the indoor arena on the Estevan Exhibition Grounds on Saturday, June 10th, 2023, 9:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. Thank you again, Brenda Montai. What's the wish, Councillor Ford?
Thanks, Your Worship, acceptance and approval, and I'm happy to announce that this year will be the Joder Brothers playing.
Oh, great.
Some local talent coming back to Southeast Saskatchewan to play for us.
Yeah, that's super. Thank you for that. I think they used to be called, what, Driftwood? I think I like the Joder Brothers better. Have we got a seconder? Councillor Sernick, thank you. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Also, next, from the Estevan Exhibition, we have a community event permit. Would you please add to the agenda for City Council a request to approve a community event permit to the Estevan Exhibition Association for the Energy City X? The Energy City X Beer Gardens will be held in the Beer Gardens on the grounds, starting on Thursday, June 8th to Sunday, June 11th, '23, inclusive. The permit times will be as follows. Thursday, June 8th, 2:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. Friday, June 9th, 2:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. Saturday, June 10th, 1:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. Sunday, June 11th, 2023, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And what's the wish of council on this one? Councillor Wallyser?
Acceptance and approval.
Okay, thank you for that. And seconded by Councillor Broba? Thank you for that. Shelley, any questions or comments? If not, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you.
Your Worship, I'm going to abstain from the next discussion.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Broba. Let it be noted, City Clerk, that Councillor Broba has left council chambers declaring a conflict of interest. So we have from the RM, the Estevan Partnership for Doug 3rd Road Surface. We talked about this at the liaison level. We should give it approval through council tonight. At the September-December '22 liaison meetings, the paving of Doug 3rd Hall Road was discussed. At that time, it was agreed the RM at the city would each commit $150,000 toward the project and apply to the Municipal Cool Transition Assistance Program for the remainder of the costs. Subsequently, at the March 8th, 2023 Provincial Funding Meeting, the RM's application was approved for up to $350,000. Further, at the RM of Estevan's March 29th, 2023 Regular Council Meeting, the following resolution was passed. MCTAP Grant Approval for Doug 3rd Hall Road Paving. Resolution Number 129-2023, moved by Councillor Don Hillstrom. The council acknowledged the approval of funding through the Municipal Cool Transition Assistance Program for the paving of Doug 3rd Hall Road to a maximum of $350,000, and that it is acknowledged that the RM of Estevan and the city of Estevan, having each committed $150,000 toward the project with the costs based on the September 7th, 2022 cost estimate provided by MPE Engineering of $617,781.73. We would like to move forward with this project and ask that you please provide us with a resolution from council confirming the city's commitment of $150,000 toward this project. The RM of Estevan is appreciative that we can work together toward the common goal of making our area more attractive and safer for local individuals, families, and tourists. Thank you so much, and that's from Michelle Dickey. What's the wish of council? Councillor Wallyser?
City Manager, how will this impact the debt repayment plan that we came up with for this year's budget?
Thank you, Councillor Wallyser. So this was an unbudgeted item, so we will either have to borrow for it or look for efficiencies in other areas. I can provide a report to council after the first quarter budget to see if it's something we can find in operations. If not, it may have to be discussed further at the council level. I am confident, though, that with our debt repayment plan over the last three years, $150,000 would be suitable to be within our $2 million debt reduction each year.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Wallyser? Councillor Clark?
Thanks, Your Worship. Just a little clarification on here, that the road isn't actually in the RM, it's actually in the park, and it's, it may look like it is, but from what I understand, it's actually part of Woodlawn, and that we've come to this agreement. I do struggle a little bit with this, and the cost has escalated, and I would like to acknowledge that I have supported the $150,000, but if it comes back higher, I wouldn't be prepared to hire, to support it at a higher rate, but I am prepared to move this motion forward as a joint project.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Clark. Have we got a seconder? Okay. Councillor Sernick, you'll second that? Oh, okay. Councillor Ford, we don't have to fight over it. Okay, Councillor Ford, thank you. Any further questions or comments? Councillor Sernick?
I just, like, it's already early in the season, and this road is almost, almost unpassable. Obviously, you can drive on it, but even goats will walk around this road, so it's a good project, using some money that's kind of available and get her done, so.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you for that. Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. And Councillor Frank, you didn't want to add anything? You're okay back there? Maybe yell at me if I don't notice your little head going up.
No, Your Worship, I too, the cost is high, but it will be nice to see this completed, and I agree with what Councillor Clark made the comments on, that $150,000 is a reasonable price for us to pay to get this done, but anymore, I'd be a little bit more hesitant, but yeah, I'm happy to see this project completed, so I know it will be beneficial either way.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Frank. Thank you, City Clerk. Let it be noted that Councillor Broba has been allowed back into council chambers. Okay, next, under written reports of committees, we have from the Southeast Transportation Committee Minutes for March 28th. Do we have a motion of acceptance? And then we'll have Councillor Clark, maybe give us a highlight. Councillor Clark, you'll make the motion for acceptance? Thank you. We got a seconder? Thank you. This time, I'll go to Councillor Sernick. You guys are just right together. That's great. Anyway, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Okay, Councillor Clark, any comments you'd like to make?
Yes, thanks, Your Worship. This meeting was after the budget, so although there was no money for, for the area close to here, and certainly not for Roche Percy, we're still pushing ahead with that to see if there's a way that they can get that, but it wasn't in this year's budget. Two projects that are probably going to affect us this summer, one would be they're doing from Stoughton to Fillmore, they're repairing, doing rebuild on that road, and they're twinning some lanes around Regina and Milestone Turnoff to the border, so there may be impact on traffic going to Regina this summer, so you're probably going to have to take a look at the road reports to see where, where the construction is and where it's changing your path as they get going on those.
Okay, thank you for the info, Councillor Clark, and yeah, I think it's a good point to go Weber and Way, go 39, unless you want to get a coat of tar on your vehicle. Okay, thank you for that, and appreciate you guys working together on that Roche Percy Road, trying to get that done, because that is an absolute mess, so hopefully we can get that done sooner than later. Okay, moving ahead, under written reports of committees, we have from the Service Valley Theater, the Minutes of April 26th. And I think there's another one. Nope, that's all April 26th, okay? Do we have a motion, please, to accept that? Councillor Broba?
I was just going to say, I know on the agenda it says the theater, but it's actually Service Valley Museum. So just so we, in the Minutes, it'll say museum.
Right.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'll make the motion because I'm on that board.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Broba, for that clarification. You'll make the motion. Have we got a seconder? Thank you, Councillor Ford. Ready for the question? All in favor? Councillor Broba, any comments you'd like to add?
Just that the museum is a really hardworking board, trying to do a lot of things for the kids on days off when they don't have school, and in the summer, they got some programming going on. And so, yeah, if you haven't been to the museum, I know a lot of people I've talked to in the past said, like, you know, I've been to the museum, I've seen it, but it's amazing when you get on the board and you actually start listening to how many kids that have never been out there and never seen the different exhibits that are out there. So if you've seen it before, but your family hasn't and your kids haven't, I really recommend you go out and check it out, because the girls have been working hard to get everything nice and clean, ready for summer, so check out the museum.
Thank you, Councillor Broba. Well said. Okay, moving forward, under written reports of committees, we have the Estevan Public Library Minutes of April 18th. Could we have a motion, please, for those? Thank you, Councillor Wallyser. Seconded by Councillor Sernick. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Anyone would like to make any comments or anything? Councillor Broba?
I'm also on that board. I was just going to say, they've also been working hard, they just had their book sale and made over $3,000 on it, so that was really good. And then they had an escape room that was also very well attended, so again, there's a lot of things going on at our local library, and it's all free, which is another thing in this economy right now. It's a great way for families to make their entertainment dollars spread a little bit further. Check out what the library has, they have a calendar, and people can check it out, bring your family. They have things there for even cooking classes, they have things there for teenagers, they have things there for adults, and they also have a very brand-new computer system area where people can go and print out resumes, or they can go and check out jobs and do different things there, or just even do a project if they don't have a computer at home, so, and also internet access, so, yeah, there's a lot of great things at the library. So if you're done checking out the museum, check out your local library.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councillor Broba. There's something there for the whole family, absolutely. Okay, again, under written reports of committees, we have from the Estevan Arts Council Minutes of March 1st. Could we have a motion, please, to accept those minutes? Thank you, Councillor Sernick. Have we got a seconder? Thank you, Councillor Clark. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, are we ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Oh, Councillor Frank, did you have any comments? I know this is your board.
Thanks, Your Worship. Yeah, I just wanted to say, the Estevan Arts Council just had their Poltava concert this weekend, which was, went over very well, was very welcoming to the community, and they're working on a few of their big concerts, as well as with spring coming, our hardworking visual arts team is going to be working on some more murals for the community, which is great to see. Last year, we saw quite a few, some through the Arts Council and some through individual artists that just got them done, and this year, we hope to see even more, which has just been fantastic for our whole community.
Super. Thank you for that. Councillor Frank? Okay, next, under executive reports, we have from the City Clerk, the Flag Proclamation Policy, 2023...
Your Worship, you missed the Minutes from the April 5th.
Oh, did I? Okay, could we have a motion? Thank you, Councillor Ford. Could we have a motion for the other meeting, which was April 5th? Thank you.
For the Arts Council.
What's that?
For the Arts Council.
Yeah, Arts Council. Okay, thank you. You'll make that motion if we got a seconder, Councillor Ford. Okay, any questions or comments on that? Seeing none, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Okay, now we're back to the City Clerk, Flag Proclamation Policy, Number 202381. Okay, the purpose of this policy is to establish a framework and to provide consistent standards to govern requests for flag raisings and proclamations. Proclamations may be issued for special events and/or activities to recognize the effort and commitment of organizations within the city of Estevan who enhance our community. Proclamations can also be a valuable tool to educate and inform our citizens. Proclamation means a formal pronouncement typically designating a period of time in recognition of a significant individual, event, organization, or matter of interest or benefit to the community. All requests for proclamations will be made in writing to the City Clerk's office at least three weeks before the day, week, month to be proclaimed. The city will not incur any expenses related to the advertising or promotion of proclamations unless the proclamation is initiated by the city of Estevan. For proclamations, the wording must be provided from the organization making the request. For proclamations to be recognized, an eligible individual or group must attend the council meeting in person. Organizations must provide and deliver the flag that is eligible and approved to fly at City Hall. Guest flags will be flown on the city of Estevan designated pole. An applicant has the ability to request a flag raising, a proclamation, or a combination of both. Administration will review all information to determine if the flag raising or proclamation request meets a criteria in accordance with this policy. Any proclamation request to be read out in council, a representative of that organization must be present at the meeting and answer any questions of council. Flag raising or proclamation requests will not be approved if, number one, the organization or request involves commercial enterprise; number two, the organization is a political party; or the requests are in support of a political party; number three, the flag or organizations which may be considered controversial, contentious, divisive within the community shall not be flown at City Hall; the organization's undertaking or philosophy or the request is contrary to city policies or bylaws, is contrary to the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms, or if it exposes hatred, violence, racism, or is otherwise discriminatory; is politically or religiously motivated; is controversial, contentious, or divisive within the community; or is untruthful, inflammatory, obscene, or libelous. So, application to complete the proclamation flag request, forward the completed form to City Clerk, and that is that. What's the wish of council on this? Councillor Wallyser, then Councillor Broba?
Thank you, Your Worship. To the City Clerk, currently, we have two types of proclamations, one that comes to council and one that's done from the mayor's office. Is there a way for the form to reflect which the group is requesting be done?
So, on, Your Worship, to Councillor Wallyser, on the form, there is, there will be space allocated for them to fill in all of that information, so I guess an example is United Way. They like to come to the mayor's office and then have his, their picture taken by media and then posted, as opposed to being in the chamber. So they still have to meet the same criteria, but they get to choose, because they are meeting in person.
Could we just add a tick box so that part of the application process specifies that?
Onto the appendix?
On to the flag request form?
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure, we could do that, Councillor Wallyser. Good idea. Any other questions or comments? Councillor Broba?
Thank you, Worship. Yes, I was just going to say, we are actually here today to, I was chairperson for the Day of Caring Night away, and so thank you for doing the proclamation today and also for hanging the flag. And I think this is a great policy, because it just gives everybody in the community guidelines as to what is acceptable and what is not, and, yeah, I think the policy is good. So did you get a seconder on that? Did you make the motion? I will make...
No, we haven't made the motion yet.
Okay, I'll make the motion then.
Okay, thank you for that. Councillor Frank? Go ahead.
Thanks, Your Worship. Thanks, Your Worship, just to City Clerk and Councillor Wallyser, it's kind of my understanding, I know we've, in the past, always done that, where we've had some proclamations done within the office, some proclamations done at council. Kind of my understanding to Clause R2, Point Number 9, that going forward, all proclamations will come to council meetings might be...
Your Worship to Counselor Wallezer. On the form, there is, there will be space allocated for them to fill in all of that information. So I guess an example is United Way. They like to come to the mayor's office and then have his, their picture taken by media and then posted, as opposed to being in the chamber. So they still have to meet the same criteria, but they get to choose because they are meeting in person.
Could we just add a tick box so that part of the application process specifies that?
Onto the appendix? Is that what you're asking? Yeah, absolutely.
Sure, we could do that, Counselor Wallezer. Good idea. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Verova?
Thank you, Worship. Yes, I was just gonna say, we are actually here today to, I was chairperson for the Day of Carey, United Way. And so, thank you for doing the proclamation today and also for hanging the flag. And I think this is a great policy because it just gives everybody in the community guidelines as to what is acceptable and what is not. And yeah, I think the policy is good. So did you get a second or on that? Did you make the motion?
No, we haven't made the motion yet.
Okay, I'll make the motion then.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Frank? Go ahead.
Thanks, Your Worship. Thanks, Your Worship. Just to city clerk and Counselor Wallezer. It's kind of my understanding, I know we've in the past always done that where we've had some proclamations done within the office, some proclamations done at council. Kind of my understanding to clause R2, point number nine, that going forward, all proclamations would come to council meetings. Might be correct on that, or can you clarify?
Well, we do want them present at the council meeting.
So.
To answer any questions as a rule. But as far as coming to council beforehand, we haven't done that, city clerk.
Yeah, so usually it's because they want to have me, they want to have media present and they want it in the paper at a certain time. That's why we've done it in the office. But there's usually only like two groups, and they're Estevan groups that actually request that. Most other groups don't request that. So I'm not really sure, if we add the addition into the form, is that enough? Or are you suggesting they can't come to the mayor's office if they don't come to council? Is that your suggestion?
Yeah, I guess it was my thought, I mean, we always have media present at the meetings. I do agree, I know two groups you're referring to that do it at the office and of course, we have no, no real issue there. But I kind of don't disagree with the idea that, that the proclamations could always be done in the council chamber. It gives us a little bit more opportunity for all of us to champion these proclamations. That would be my opinion.
Okay, Counselor Verova?
Thank you, Worship. I was just gonna say, I've been on the United Way board since 2014 and I was unaware that we had actually requested that. And more than likely, you're right, it's probably because of the fact of media. But I think Counselor Frank is also correct in the fact that media is here. So I guess, or we can have a different one as well. I wouldn't object the fact that all proclamations come to council meeting, only for the fact that if at one time there is nobody on this board or on this council that is a member of the United Way, this council may not even be aware that the proclamation happened. So it might be a good idea for all of council to always be aware of what proclamations are out there and what they're representing.
Okay, the only issue there, Counselor Verova, is if they send it, because some of these don't come and give us a lot of time. So we'll have to try to make sure because if they don't make it to council, then they'll fall, right?
And I think that's what our new policy with the proclamation that we were talking about was that we wanted to make sure that they came to council and actually spoke on it. Some of it is even just a pronunciation of some of these words that they send to us. And so some groups are not even based out of Estevan, but they'll just send it because we're the city. And so they send off an email and we read the proclamation. I just think it would give a lot more meaning to these proclamations too if someone from the group actually presented to council and explained, and then you did your official signature and it's down.
Yeah, that is in there now.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Counselor Wallezer? And then Counselor Frank?
Just to echo Counselor Verova, because the policy requires three weeks for processing, I think in time the community would come to learn that regardless of how they want the proclamation, time needs to be allowed so that we can do our portion of the vetting, ensuring that it meets the above-listed criteria that it isn't maybe an organization we're not familiar with that would in fact meet the political or religious affiliations that we're trying to avoid.
Okay, well, I guess we can send out city clerk, the ones that we usually do, to give them notice for next year that they come ahead of time because it'll be going through council. And then they can get their heads up. What do you think?
So, Your Worship, the only parameter I can see being a problem is the, actually, newspaper they need. I don't know if you got a picture on Monday night, would you have the ability to get it into the paper for that week?
Hard to say.
Yeah.
Usually, I don't know if I need to be in front of the microphone for this.
No, we can.
I can discuss a few afterwards.
Okay.
So, what I was just gonna say is, with the three weeks' notice, it will make all groups aware, including the United Way of Estevan, to be aware of the fact that if we want it in the paper and we want a picture of it, then the onus is on the group to make sure that it's done in time. So I think it can be done. I just think you're right. I think that's very good that you want to give notice to the groups that are used to the way it's being done. And it's just, I mean, we, we just did it this morning, so we have 365 days to get used to the new way of doing it.
Okay. Counselor Frank? Did you have your hand up?
I did, but I think my comment's been answered.
Okay, now, did you second that motion or were you going to, Counselor Frank?
Yeah, I will.
Okay, I want to get you involved or keep you involved in the meeting here. Otherwise, you're gonna fall asleep, I think. Okay, we have the second or? Questions or comments? Further? Seeing none, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, next, from the city treasurer. Trudy's not with us this evening. She's on holidays, but she did help put this all together. Some of our other staff, including city manager, and thank you for that, city manager. We have the travel expense policy amendments. The purpose of this policy is to outline the travel expense and meal allowance that will be paid by the city of Estevan to authorized individuals while they're conducting business for the city of Estevan. Travel and meal allowance policy applies to any city official of the city of Estevan. In this policy, the term "city official" refers to members of council, employees of the city, and any other individual authorized by the city of Estevan to claim expenses incurred while transacting business on behalf of the city. Reference to a council member refers only to council members. Reference to an employee only refers to employees. Responsibility, responsibilities and authority enforcement of this policy is a responsibility of the city treasurer. Requests for advice and assistance in administration or interpretation of this policy should be directed to the city manager and/or city treasurer. Policies and procedures, expenses incurred and claim for travel and/or meals by a city official will be paid only when the claimant is representing the city of Estevan, engaging in municipal business, or attending a meeting, course, or convention approved by council or management. The city of Estevan recognizes that city officials may be required to use their own personal vehicle from time to time in order to complete municipal business. Persons who use their personal vehicle for company business will be reimbursed based on the number of kilometers traveled. City employees cannot claim mileage from their residence to their place of employment. Approved mileage will be reimbursed at the rate set by Canada Revenue Agency. This rate is updated at the beginning of January of each year. The city treasurer is responsible to notify all members of city council, city manager, each department manager of rate changes as they occur. For other travel expenses, including but not limited to hotel bills, registration fees, parking costs, original receipts showing the amount paid and applicable taxes must be attached to the travel claim form. Expenses without original receipts will be reimbursed at the rate set within this policy. If travel expenses such as airfare or car rental are required and are not reserved through the offices of City Hall, then it's expected the lowest-cost option will be utilized. If items such as hotel accommodations are not reserved through the offices at City Hall, then it's expected that the lowest-cost option will be utilized. If an individual chooses to use private accommodations, an amount of $35 per day will be reimbursed to that individual. Meals, allowances, guidelines, regulations. Meals will be paid in accordance with Canada Revenue Agency rates adjusted annually. No receipts are required when claiming the amounts on Schedule A and approved by this policy. Meals will only be paid for city officials. Meals for others such as a spouse or partner will not be paid by the city of Estevan unless approval and writing from the city treasurer or city manager is attached to the claim form. Where a banquet is part of a convention, the city of Estevan will pay the cost of the banquet tickets for approved registrants. In most circumstances, these tickets are prepaid at the time of registration and do not become part of the claim form. If tickets are purchased by the city official at a later date, a receipt must be provided to claim the reimbursement. Any meals included in the registration cost of a convention, workshop, meeting, et cetera, cannot be claimed by a city official. If an individual chooses to eat at a place other than where the meal is provided, they must cover the cost of that meal out of pocket. Meals paid for directly by the city of Estevan or by another person or company shall not be claimed by a city official. Cash advances, cash advances may be required in certain instances. Prepare the cash advance portion of an expense claim form. This will include the reason for the advanced estimated amount. This form needs to be approved by the division manager as well as the city treasurer. Requests will have to be approved and to accounts payable at least seven days prior to the funds being available. Receipts are required for any transaction occurring which involve cash advance payment. A complete reconciliation is to be completed, and any unused amounts will be given back directly to the city treasurer. If any city expenses occur in excess of the advanced amount, a receipt accompanied by an expense claim must be provided before the amount will be reimbursed. Cash advances should be requested only when all other methods for obtaining goods, services have been exhausted and should be kept at a minimum level. Cash advances must be reconciled and reported to accounts payable within 30 days of issuance. A reminder letter will be sent to individuals who have outstanding advances older than 30 days. If the outstanding advance is still not reconciled after a reminder has been sent, the advance will be forwarded to the divisional manager for review approval. If a history of delinquency is observed, cash advance privileges can be revoked by the city treasurer. Predium amounts will be paid to the mayor or councillors for days required for conferences and meetings. No receipts are required for this amount. Expense claims by councillors need to be signed off by the mayor, the city manager, or the city treasurer. Claims made by the mayor require a sign-off from the city manager or the city treasurer. Overview and enforcement. All persons requesting travel and/or meal reimbursement must complete a travel claim form, which shall include their name, the date of expense, the reason for the claim, i.e. meeting, convention, or other, the destination, total mileage being claimed, if applicable. All other expenses must be listed individual on the claim form with receipts attached as required. When a claim is being made by an employee of the city, the claim form shall be approved by the manager or supervisor of that employee. When a claim is made by a council member, the claim form shall be approved by the mayor or, in his or her absence, the city manager or city treasurer. If the claim is made by anyone other than an employee or council member, the claim shall be approved by the city manager or the city treasurer. Anyone caught making false claims, exaggerating expenses, or claiming for manager meals that were not related to city business, or any other misreporting will be subject to disciplinary action. So basically, this is the same policy we've had in case or in place for, I don't know how long, city manager, quite a while. But I know it's updated every year, you know, at, at your leisure and the city treasurer, right?
Thank you, Worship. Yes, the biggest change to this policy is that we're gonna follow Canadian Revenue Agency rates, as noted by Canada Revenue Agency, because the, the items were specifically listed in the, in the policy before. This gives us the ability to make those changes when CRA makes the changes for mileage, meals, and whatnot. So that was the biggest change to the rules.
Okay, thank you, city manager, for that. Okay, we'll open the floor for a motion to approve the policies and procedures. And then we can have discussion. Counselor Verova?
I was gonna wait and see if anyone else put their hand up in case anyone else wanted to talk tonight, but I will go ahead.
Oh, we'll all have lots of time to talk. Have we got a second or?
I was gonna make the motion, but I was also just gonna say, I did actually research this weekend with this policy, and it's pretty standard amongst most of the cities. And I think this is a very good step in the right direction by having it actually looked at annually because some of the cities seem very far behind and don't look at it annually, so I think that is good, so I would make that motion.
Okay, thank you for that. And I know on most RMs, they book so much per meeting, and we've already agreed as a council, in fact, a few councils ago, that whatever you get for your stipend, it doesn't matter how many meetings, that, that concern type, that covers everything. Okay, have we got a second or? Counselor Cernik, thank you. Any further discussion, comments, questions? Seeing none, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, next, under executive reports, we have from the building official. We have the building permits for April of '23. Could we have a motion, please, to accept the building permit report? Thank you, Counselor Cernik, seconded by Counselor Wallezer. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, Counselor Verova, did you have a question on top of that? Okay. Okay, thank you, city clerk. Under introduction of bylaws, this evening, we have none. Under public hearings and reports, this evening, we have none. Giving notice, we have a proclamation from fibromyalgia, myalgic encephaloelitis, Awareness Day, May 12th. So whereas fibromyalgia FM and myalgic encephaloelitis ME, I'll maybe use those acronyms moving forward, also known as chronic fatigue syndrome, CFS. Awareness Day aims to raise awareness and end the stigma and discrimination that accompanies these chronic illnesses. Whereas fibromyalgia and ME affect about 5% of Canada's population. Over 568,000 men, women, and children of all ages and races in Saskatchewan are afflicted with one or more or both of these chronic illnesses. And whereas FM and ME often take an average of three to five years to receive a diagnosis. And whereas, once diagnosed, an individual is often ill for years, with as many as 70% of sufferers becoming disabled for life. Whereas FM and ME are complex illnesses which cause debilitating chronic pain, overwhelming fatigue, cognitive impairment, immune dysfunction, and extreme physical exhaustion. This pain can become strong enough to prevent people from working or engaging in physical activities for months and even years. And whereas, patients with FM and ME often have a number of coexisting conditions, which may include chronic myofacial pain, irritable bowel syndrome, temporomandular joint disorder, environmental sensitivities, anxiety, depression. And whereas, the causes of these diseases are still unknown, and there are no effective treatments for them, so more research is urgently needed. And whereas FM and ME greatly reduce the quality of life, can cause total disability, and also affect families, friends, employers. Living with chronic pain and fatigue on a daily basis can lead to social isolation. So it is important for sufferers and their families, friends, caregivers to know that they are not alone. And whereas, people with FM or ME have a right to be treated with dignity and have a right to pain relief. And whereas, existing public information, medical education, research, resources to properly serve patients, communities remain inadequately disseminated, are insufficient in addressing the needs of specific diverse populations and other underserved groups. And whereas, increased awareness and understanding by the public, healthcare providers, and policymakers of the day, multifaceted management challenges of FM and E, and ME, sorry, and its impact on patients' functions and quality of life may reduce the stigma of this, of this illness. Be it therefore resolved, I Roy Leving, Mayor of the city of Estevan, do proclaim May 12th as FM and ME Awareness Day in the city of Estevan and ask our citizens to recognize the same. Okay, could we have a motion to accept that proclamation, please? Thank you, Counselor Clark. Have we got a second or? Thank you, Counselor Cernik. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, this evening, motions from committee, we have none. Consideration of bylaws, we've got four bylaws to give second and third readings tonight too. Having given first reading at our last meeting and been given the opportunity for the community members to digest and let us know if they have any concerns. City manager, city clerk, I don't think we've had any concerns on any of these, have we, city clerk? No, city manager, no. Okay, thank you. So moving forward, under consideration of bylaws, we'll start with bylaw 2023-2070. dash twenty-seventy, bylaw to provide for the library levy, a bylaw in the City of Estevan and the province of Saskatchewan to provide for a special tax for library levy and operations in the City of Estevan. Whereas, the council of the City of Estevan deems it necessary and desirable to charge a special tax for the purpose of providing funding to cover the committed amount required by the Southeast Regional Library to an amount of three hundred and eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars, which works out to thirty-five dollars and seventy-four cents per capita. Now therefore, council of the City of Estevan hereby enacts as follows, a special tax shall be charged against each class of property within the city to generate approximately four hundred and three thousand dollars for Southeast Regional Library and local library operations pursuant to section ten of the Cities Act. The special tax shall be charged at a rate of zero point three seven four mils based on the current year's assessment. So, moving forward, do we have a motion for second reading of bylaw twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-seventy? Constable Wallezer, thank you. Have we got a second or? Thank you, Constable Sernick. Any questions or comments? Constable Roba.
Thank you, worship. Just to explain, the special tax, we're actually collecting four hundred and three thousand when the first portion says three hundred and eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifteen. So the difference in that is the extra money that we've allocated so that the library can actually do the funding program, or the program, we fund that, and waiver, the city waiver, and also funds their extra programs. So because the way, the library is not actually allowed to charge for any of their programming, so they do do some things like the book sale and that kind of thing to fundraise, but that extra money, the difference between the four hundred and three and the three hundred and eighty-seven is the amount that the city has committed to them for the extra funding. Just to verify that.
Okay, well, thank you for that, Constable Roba, much appreciated. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Now, for bylaw twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-seventy, could we have a third motion and adoption for use, please? I'm getting wore out in my voice. Thank you, Constable Roba. Oh, I see the man on the screen. Why don't we have him second this? Thank you, Constable Frank. Okay, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. That is passed. Next, under consideration of bylaws, we have bylaw twenty-two. Oh, go ahead, Constable Frank.
Worship, I will be calling conflict of interest for this one.
Okay, for the for the business improvement? Okay, thank you. Let it be noted that Constable Frank has declared a conflict of interest, and we have omitted him from the screen. You'll see his name up there, but he's gone. Okay? So bylaw twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-seventy-one, bylaw in the City of Estevan and the province of Saskatchewan to provide for Business Improvement District in brackets bid levy in the City of Estevan. Whereas, under the authority of section twenty-six of the Cities Act, the city may impose a levy to be used for business purposes within the Business Improvement District. And whereas, the council of the City of Estevan deems it necessary and desirable to charge a Business Improvement Levy for the purpose of providing financial assistance to Business Improvement District bid in the amount of twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars that will benefit the downtown core. Now therefore, council of the City of Estevan hereby enacts as follows, Business Improvement District in brackets bid levy shall be charged against each property as outlined in the official community plan twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-thirty-nine within the city to generate approximately twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for the Business Improvement District commitment at a rate of zero point zero zero one one four six one two one three zero. Okay, what's the wish of council? Do we have second reading? Thank you. Thank you, Constable Clark. Have we got the sec? Okay, thank you, Constable Ford, for the second motion. Ready for the question? Those in favor? Carrie, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. We didn't have any questions or comments on that, right? Good. Okay, now, we'll ask for third reading of bylaw twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-seventy-one and adoption for use. Thank you, Constable Wallezer. Second or Constable Sernick? Okay, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Now, we'll move under consideration of bylaws to bylaw twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-seventy-two, bylaw to provide for health levy, again, second and third reading. So, bylaw twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-seventy-two, bylaw in the City of Estevan and the province of Saskatchewan to provide for a special levy for regional healthcare in the City of Estevan. Whereas, under authority of section two-seven-seven of the Cities Act, and the city may pass a special tax bylaw for any specific purpose. And whereas, the council of the City of Estevan deems it necessary and desirable to change a special tax for the purpose of providing financial assistance to regional healthcare in the amount of one hundred thousand that will benefit the entire city. Now therefore, council of the City of Estevan hereby enacts as follows, a special tax shall be charged against each class of property within the city to generate approximately one hundred and two thousand dollars for regional healthcare. Now, most of this will be for recruitment. Pursuant to section ten of the Cities Act, the special tax shall be charged at a rate of zero point zero nine four six mils based on the current year's assessment. So, do we have the second or the second reading? The motion for the second reading, please? Thank you, Constable Ford, seconded by Constable Sernick, thank you. Any further questions or comments? Being second reading? If not, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Now, could we have third reading and adoption for use for bylaw twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-seventy-two, healthcare? Thank you, Constable Sernick, thank you, seconded by Constable Roba. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Last but not least, under consideration of bylaws, we have bylaw twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-seventy-three, a bylaw of the City of Estevan and the province of Saskatchewan to fix the rate of taxation to be known as property tax bylaw. Whereas, section two-fifty-three of the Cities Act authorizes council to annually pass a property tax bylaw to impose a levy on all taxable assessment in the City of Estevan at a uniform mill rate considered sufficient to raise the amount of taxes required to meet the estimated expenditures and transfers in regard to estimated revenues from other sources set out in the budget of the city, and any other rates required by the Cities Act or any other act. And whereas, subsection two-five-four-one of the Cities Act authorizes council to establish classes, subclasses of property for the purpose of establishing tax rates. And whereas, section two-five-five of the Cities Act authorizes council to set mill rate factors, which factors, when multiplied by the uniform rate determined by council, establish a tax rate for each class or subclass of properties established by council, which tax rates may be different for each class or subclass of property. And whereas, section two-five-eight of the Cities Act provides the annual property tax bylaw may provide for minimum amounts payable as property tax, B, either a minimum amount of tax or a method of calculating the minimum amount of tax, and C, different amounts of minimum tax or different methods of calculating minimum tax for different classes or subclasses of property. And whereas, the Education Property Tax Act of two thousand seventeen requires the city to levy and collect against the properties in the school divisions within the city at the tax rates determined under that act by the lieutenant governor and council for the different property classes. And whereas, the city has received notice pursuant to the Education Property Tax Act seventeen that the Holy Family Roman Catholic Separate School Division Number One Forty intends to determine its own tax rates pursuant to that act, which we will also collect. Now therefore, the council at the City of Estevan in the province of the rate of Saskatchewan enacts as follows, in this bylaw taxable properties mean the properties that are not fully exempt from the taxation pursuant to the Cities Act or any other act. School division mill rates pursuant to the Education Property Act of seventeen on behalf of the school divisions within the City of Estevan for the year twenty-twenty-three. The city levies the following tax rates on taxable properties within each school division using the property clocks classes established by the lieutenant governor on council pursuant to the act. Ag property, one point four two mils. Residential property, four point five four mils. Commercial industrial property, six point eight six mils. Resource, oil, gas, mines, pipelines, nine point eight eight mils. Pursuant to section two-five-three of the City of the Cities Act, the city levies a rate of fourteen point eight mils per dollar on all taxable properties within the City of Estevan. In addition to the minimum tax payable under section six, raise the amount of money required on the year twenty-twenty-three to meet the city's estimated expenditures and transfers having regard to the estimated revenues from other sources. Property class and subclasses, council adopts the rate classes of property set out under the Cities Act, establishes the following subclasses, large commercial improvements that are large open shell standalone improvements which may or may not have some partitioning for offices or storage. The design of this improvement is focused on the function of the business rather than aesthetic appeal. These improvements have a minimum assessment of five million and a minimum square footage of fifty thousand. Multi-unit apartments less than twelve. Land and improvement designed and used for, or no, that's greater than twelve, used for and intended to be used for, or in conjunction with, a residential purpose to accommodate, oh, it's larger than twelve, twelve or more, self-containing dwelling units within a parcel. Condominium properties, condominium properties are a subclass of the multi-unit residential property class, which subclass includes any condominium unit within the meaning of the Condominium Property Act nineteen ninety-three that is used for residential purposes. Motels, land and improvement designed and used for, intended to be used for in conjunction with, commercial purpose that provides lodging on a short-term basis. Motel full-service accommodation complex containing full-service restaurants, separate bar establishment, and separate off-sale establishment. Mall, large enclosed, large retail complex containing stores, businesses facing a system of enclosed walkways for pedestrians. The entrance to the complex is controlled by a limited number of entrances, and most stores are only accessible via interior corridors. Mill rate factors, pursuant to the Cities Act, the following mill rate factors are established by council to be multiplied by the uniform rate established by council under section three, respecting the following classes, non-arable range, one point one, other agricultural, one residential, zero point seven two five, multi-unit residential condo, point seven seven five, multi-unit residential apartments, four to eleven, one point four, multi-unit residential apartments greater than twelve, one point five four two. Commercial industrial, one point five five zero, commercial motel, two point three, commercial motel full service, one point nine, commercial, large commercial, two point eight five, commercial, large commercial, two point eight five, did I just read that? Commercial mall, one point five, railway and pipeline, two point four. Minimum tax pursuant to section two-five-eight of the Cities Act, a minimum tax of seven hundred dollars on taxable property assessed for both land and improvements is established. The minimum tax shall apply to residential and commercial industrial classes of property. This bylaw shall be effective from January first, twenty-three, to December thirty-first of twenty-three, and will come into force on passing, which hopefully will be tonight. So, could we have second reading for bylaw twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-seventy-three taxation? Thank you, Constable Roba, seconded by, thank you, Constable Clark. Any questions or comments? Constable Roba.
Thank you, worship. I just think, kudos again to city management for keeping that we were able to basically find the efficiencies in the budget, and I know council has a hand in that, but it largely goes to city manager and all of the managers and staff of the city. But for having zero percent tax increase, but honestly, with the carbon tax and everything that's coming down the pipe, that's affecting each and every one of us at our workplaces, at our homes. I just don't know if we can hold the line at zero again next year. I think that's gonna be a hit to us, unless we have an election and somehow the new government that wants to get rid of the carbon tax gets in. Wouldn't that be great? So anyways, I just.
That wasn't a political push, was it, Constable Roba?
I just pray every day that somebody will see the error in his ways and recognize that the carbon tax is killing everybody. So, yes, it is a political thing that we, I don't know how, like, we got gas bills that are basically going up, up, and up, and then we get told that we have to get rid of our natural, our carbon and our coal and everything else, and just rely on natural gas, and I just don't know how we do that when they keep pounding the price of that up, too. So anyways, my long-winded rant is over, and just kudos to the city manager and the management team for basically being able to hold it at zero this year.
Absolutely, they did a great job, and thank, I'd like to thank council for their concurrence in accepting it that way this year. And yeah, the carbon tax, my goodness, the gas has gone from thirty, forty bucks a month to a hundred and seventy. That's insane. But anyway, that's another story, another day. But any further questions, Covets? If not, all in favor? Thank you very much. So now, our last bylaw this evening, could I have a motion, please, to accept bylaw twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-seventy-three for adoption and use? Thank you, Constable Wallezer, seconded by, Constable Ford, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Been a lot of talking tonight, I'm getting hoarse. Inquiries, Constable Roba.
Thank you, worship. Just a couple of things. The first thing is a bike rack. I had a lady that let me ask me if she inquired. She asked me about bike racks and whether or not the city has any, or if any downtown businesses are interested in putting any around. When she does do her errands, et cetera, she likes to use her bike, and I know the Viking Brew is really big, Constable Clark, I think, is a part, big part of that. And so I know the Tower Restaurant has bike racks there for them and for any other patrons. But I just thought maybe there's a way through our economic development, if we could encourage people to, or even through our tourism, just to put out bike racks if they're, they can, and if we, as a city in our parks, could possibly look at putting some bike racks out just to make sure that people can, her concern was locking them up.
Okay, Constable Roba, if you like, we could contact all our third-party crews, which we have quite a few, and first ask them if they would consider putting up bike racks for their patrons.
Yeah.
And I'm sure this evening, through your advertising, you know, we can ask our local businesses to have a look at that as well.
Yeah, and I know some of them may have a hardship if their business is on Forest Street, putting a bike rack in front of, some of their might take up some too much room in the front of the building or block, but probably in the back alley or another area somewhere downtown, like, the Tower has, again, found a spot to do it, and he does it well, so hopefully.
Okay, and if you like, we could maybe even promote through our person on bid, whoever that may be, that maybe they look at some of the businesses, if they have the space, putting up a bike rack.
Excellent. And then my other thing was, at the beginning of our meeting, we presented the medals for the Queen Jubilee. Can you describe the significance of this medal and how the recipients or who nominated the recipients? Just because I feel like when we first did this evening, we may know and acknowledge that we, they received the medal, but we didn't really do a little speech or anything to just explain to the people watching.
Okay, sure. These particular worthy recipients this evening were nominated by myself, and I was given a quota of so many people within our community. And of course, we talked to council, and if council had any suggestions coming forward. So that's how these people got nominated. And Minister Carr also had, I think, two-thirds of the people when we had the big gathering at the Elks were her people, and then, what did we have, city clerk, I think, ten. So all in, probably thirteen, fourteen that we had as a city, and then Minister Carr would have had about thirty.
Thank you. So they basically, they received them based on their volunteer work. Some of them were for volunteer.
That's correct.
Some of them were for their work in the community, just in other avenues, so.
That's right. Service to the community, whether it be political, whether it be work within the community or. Service to the community, whether it be political, whether it be work within the community, volunteer work, or whether it was donations over many years.
Yeah.
You know, people giving that way.
Well, all three, all three ladies that received tonight are all very heavily involved in the volunteer community.
That's right.
Yeah, so they were very worthy recipients.
And that's what we kind of dwelled on, the volunteer effort, because as I've said many times, and I know council agrees, we have absolutely the best volunteers in the province. So this was an opportunity for us to recognize them.
You selected well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Councilor Clark?
Thanks, your worship. Just want to comment on the, on the bike thing here, I can certainly take that to bid. Before I do that, I would at least like to acknowledge that the city hall doesn't have a bike rack, and I chained mine to the flagpole. So maybe we should look at our own backyard before we go out to everybody else, so...
In the plan.
It's in the plan, and I'm sure that's what everybody will say, but let's, let's show my leadership first before we go asking everybody else. Thank you.
Okay, well, we could definitely, through the good offices of the city manager, we could move that forward and we can get a bike rack. We'll have to look at a suitable location, but we could do that. Okay, thank you, Councilor Wellyser.
Thank you, your worship. Just a reminder that in June is when the Humane Society holds their annual dog jog fundraiser. The sponsorship forms are going to be available this week. They are being sent home with students through the school system as well as available for pickup down at the Humane Society, so anybody that's interested can sign up.
Okay, thank you for that, Councilor Wellyser. You know, I can't go past that smiling face on the screen. Instead of Councilor Frank being last, we'll allow him to be third from last. Go ahead, Councilor Frank.
That's the only reason why I'm zooming in, is so I can up myself up a couple of ones. Just, the only inquiry I had this last couple of weeks was, uh, Business on Fifth Street, Southeast Physiotherapy, mentioned they do have a handicap spot in front of their building, but they don't actually have wheelchair ramp up on, to the sidewalk. So they just put in a little bit of a request for that, that has been sent to Normack and a road crew, so at this point, I think we'll just leave it in his hands, and if there's any questions or anything, then they can come to council a little bit on that if it needs to be.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Frank, and that did come up at our traffic committee, and that will be taken care of, they will be given accessibility for wheelchairs. And that reminds me, Councilor Vroba, we have to bring all 10 minutes to city hall as well.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm remiss in that, because we had a meeting, and even though we meet every three months, we should have bought them, and sorry about that, but we will bring them to council. Okay, thank you, Councilor Frank. Councilor Ford?
Thanks, your worship. As discussed actually a couple of times tonight, we are officially one month away from the Energy City X, which begins on June 8th and goes until June 11th, and we are very fortunate again this year to have it from a Thursday to a Sunday, so everybody should be able to go and spend their weekend at the, at the fair. It's gonna be another great midway, great food, and a rodeo, and as said before, the Saturday's rodeo cabaret is the Johnner Brothers. This event absolutely cannot take place without volunteers, and so this year it's been done a little bit differently. Our, we should just call her the Queen of Volunteering. Our lovely volunteer coordinator this year is Pam Dechef, and she has gotten everyone in tip-top shape already. So, much like was done with curling, she did all the organizing for that. There's actually an online signup where you can go and you can pick your spots and you can decide whether you want to work at the gates or the beer gardens or wherever else. And also as a perk, when you volunteer, you will also receive free admission to the exhibition on the day that you volunteer. So if I volunteer at the gate from 3:00 to 6:00 on Thursday, I get free entrance into the fair for the rest of the evening. So if you do search the Estevan Exhibition Association on Facebook, the signup link is there, and I believe Jacqueline, if we could get that on our city page, that would be great. But yeah, so that's all for volunteering. And then I would just like to send out a big congratulations to all those nominated for the Southeast Saskatchewan Women of Distinctions Award. The award ceremony takes place this Wednesday, May 10th, and is highlighting some of the best women of Southeast Saskatchewan. These nominated women have poured their time and energy into this community and surrounding area to make it a better place, and now is their time to be recognized and honored. So congratulations to everybody.
Thank you very much, Councilor Ford. Thank you for helping to get the rodeo and all of that on the weekend, which is when it should be, and I'm sure the attendance will be greater as a result of that. And we would like to promote and congratulate all of the women that have been nominated, and, you know, that'll be a great event to recognize the women in our community that do such a fantastic job. I was always involved in that before, but unfortunately, this year I have a commitment I can't make, but I think, Councilor Cernik, I think you're gonna be able to make it? No? Or did you just advertise? I saw you were in the paper.
Just advertised.
Oh, okay, okay.
Congratulations.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, worship. Couple things tonight, congratulations to Epic for hosting Estevan's first-ever cornhole tournament. It seemed to be a good night, it was a good time, something totally different. I didn't make it to the end of the night, Councilor... She made it to the end of the night, that was good. Then the other thing was attending the 30th Williston Basin Conference, which is normally about oil and gas, but this year it wasn't really about oil and gas, it was, it was more about transition and carbon capture. And again, once again, Estevan and Boundary Dam Unit 3 were the center of attention. The SASS Power Carbon Capture Team was praised for having their best month ever of capturing over 800,000 tons of CO2. Scott Dryden was actually singled out for his contributions and dedication towards BD3 success, so that's something I wanted to mention, and to Scott and the SASS Power Carbon Capture Team, keep up the great work, the world is watching.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilor Cernik, and I had the privilege of attending, and I was able to take Anger, and he met a lot of great people, and we're pursuing some economic initiatives as a result, so we're looking forward to that. It was a great conference, and I'm sure Anger will, and probably yourself, Tony, will be continuing to go in the future. It was well-received. Thank you. City manager, any comments this evening? Okay, city clerk, anything this evening?
Reminder of citywide cleanup starts on the 15th.
Ah, yes, thank you so much for that, and we always look forward to that every year, so please remember the date. Okay, do we have a motion to move into committee this evening? Thank you, Councilor Cernik, seconded by? Councilor Ford, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you so much, we stand adjourned, and good evening.